And bought a lot of supplies, not only food and drinks, but also pots and pans and also, yeah, cleaning supplies and activities that they could do for their Halloween party because it was just before Halloween. We also bought them a brand-new Wii because they had an old, like, 2005 GameCube that they had had for about twenty years or fifteen years. And so, that's the first thing. And because of that and because of the Greenwood donations, we received a letter, which is right here, from the, what was it? The Regional Superintendent of Schools for Lake County thanking Student Council for all the wonderful work we did for Greenwood and the Waukegan community. So that was pretty cool. And then also, an article, I don't know if any of you saw it, an article was written in the Lake Forest or about Student Council for homecoming. So that legacy kind of lives on even past homecoming week. And, yeah, that's pretty much it for now.
So we have some newly-elected freshman Student Council members. They just joined us a couple of weeks ago. And they are already up and running. They had a bake sale today after school. And I got a little look at the cash box, and it's pretty filled. You know, they were going around the commons, selling brownies and cupcakes and everything for dollars. So they are raising money for their Christmas family, our annual gifts that we give to families for Student Council. So they're already raising money for that. And then also, they, Lake Forest High School has an annual Veterans Day essay contest where students can write an essay just about Veterans Day, what it means to them. And we had one student, a freshman girl, make a video. And Maddie Kung is her name. And she was selected as the contest winner. And as a prize, she was given $500 to give to any club in the school. And she decided to give it to Student Council. So we'll be also putting that towards the Greenwood Elementary Fund. So it's exciting. Happy Veterans Day, everyone.
And then the last thing is, one thing we talked about last week was the Student Advisory Board, which was a group of students organized by Mr. Rogers and Mr. Sullivan, looking for targets for the grant money and where that money will go in our school. And just a quick update that that is up and running, and they're meeting once a month. And it's looking good so far. So, thank you.
Thank you, Luke and Lena.
Could I just say, excuse me, good for you for thinking of some way to help the students in Waukegan. I think everyone was really concerned about that strike, but leave it to the students to actually take some action and do something good. So, thank you, and it's a good thing that you thought about that.
Luke talked a little bit about Student Advisory Board, and I think it's one of the things we're doing to help have our students put their fingerprints all over the school in terms of opportunities that they want to pursue, in terms of decisions, in terms of the school, things that happen at the school, and really extending even the role of Student Council. A little over a week ago, Mr. Simic, myself, Assistant Superintendent Fagel, as well as John Maher, had an opportunity to visit Croya. And we had a great experience over at Croya, meeting with different students there and getting feedback on our strategic plan. It was probably the highlight of my month, getting lots of great feedback, what's working, what's not working, again, and developing the best school for students. So, and I just want to thank the students, and I know Luke was part of that team. It was a fantastic evening. I want to highlight a couple of great things that have been happening at the school lately. We had a very successful parent-teacher conference night. And as part of that, we had an open house for our Innovation Incubator. And our Innovation Incubator really does represent a new paradigm for teaching, where kids are working with mentors from outside the school, experts in the field of business, working with a great teacher, working on their own products and their own ideas. Every day is a great experience. Students feel challenged, it feels rigorous. But they said it doesn't necessarily feel like work. It feels fun, it feels exciting, it feels invigorating. So more to come on the Innovation Incubator. I think there's a lot of great things happening in terms of the support mechanisms. Last year, as we looked at the issue of equity and access, and said you can't do equity and access unless you do a good job in terms of supporting students. And so we took that very seriously. And right now, we have three major areas that we're really focusing on. One is a writing center, which is staffed by teachers, periods one through eight before-after school, which is the old public room, for support for students. We also have a math resource center now, which is designated in Room 203. We've removed a lot of the barriers to getting there in terms of the passes and what would be required. So more students are getting support. And last, and certainly not least, the student support and teacher support, but student support in this case reviving the yoga studio. So students wanting to do interesting projects, need help with some of the technology in terms of the reports, in terms of the collaboration. So really exciting things happening. Our students, I just want a couple of highlights, too. We had a couple of great finishes. We had state runner-up in field hockey. And we also had a state runner-up in the girls' cross-country. So that was a fantastic finish for both of our girls' teams. We have some powerhouse girls. The boys are doing well. We had some boys qualify for state and top twenty finishes. What we're very excited about this Saturday, when we play Nazareth in the final eight of the state in football. So we're excited and looking forward to the weekend. And keep going, Scouts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers, and Lena, and Luke. I wanted to add a couple of comments that I just got back from a conference that really leveraged an awful lot of talent in Silicon Valley, brought a number of different people to come and speak with a group I was meeting with there. One of those was a professor named Ken Goldberg from Berkeley. And one of the things that he said is, "Robots are the gateway drug of science and engineering." What's really interesting about his work, in a large part, is that there's some eye-rolling at times when people hear about robots, that it only applies to a small number of kids. And his work is really focused on art, and imagination, and culture, and robotics, all merging. There are huge numbers of jobs that he sees coming, both in programming and in repair of robots, because robots are going to become a part of everyday life. He also was asked, hey, so how do schools get involved in this? And he said, you go to the first program. We have a first robotics club that, really pleased to see, Mr. Rogers has established at our high school. He also commented that cross-disciplinary teams are now the norm in every one of their labs. He also had a professor from MIT. He is the head of the Teacher Training Department there. And he introduced a concept of hard fun, which is, he poses to chocolate-covered broccoli, which is what a lot of science instruction has been, as it relates to robotics and other things. We also had somebody from, let me see, the Intel Corporation, the guy that's head of Intel came and spoke to us as well. One of the interesting concepts there was that, he said, because of changes in the market, and because of crowdsourcing, and the ability to leverage things online, that people can routinely now prototype and market-test something for under $1,000 with 3D printing. So a student can go out and say, hey, I have this idea, I've tested it, I need somebody to throw $500 my way so I can market this. And these things are possible. Kids can get all sorts of different things from the Internet, motors and such, that they couldn't describe the maker fairs as a combination of county fairs and science fair and garage art. Said that lots and lots of middle schools are doing really great work, as are high schools. It's very open-ended, it's very flexible, it's very learn-as-you-go. And there's going to be no solution for schools that Intel or Pearson Incorporated are going to create. The maker movement is very local, it's very organic and very nichey. Another really interesting thing is that he believes that the maker movement, which is the doing stuff in your garage essentially, is as interesting to girls as it is to boys, and that girls are really undersold on this. Girls tend not to be as interested in the competition, which is typical of robotics, but they're incredibly interested in science, and in working in teams, and really effective at that. We also had the guy that was head of Apple come and talk to us, which was a very interesting discussion that he had. And finally, somebody from Pixar came and talked to us about all the things that are going on. Pixar is pairing up with the Khan Academy. There are going to be all sorts of introductory, introductory things that they're going to be doing on there for lots of different kinds of robotics. And other things that are going on, there's a lot happening in the state right now. The election is going to usher in a number of different potential changes. One of the bills coming that is now, looks like it's dead in the water, SB 16, was intended as a conversation starter, but it'd be about a half a million dollars for us. The pattern of these things is somebody starts a conversation, and three or four years later, it winds up being a law. So this is an idea to watch very, very carefully. PARC, the new assessment is also, it continues to be very hotly debated. It may take as many as fifteen hours for students to complete that. And also, the implementation of that is really problematic. The cost shift, the current thinking is that Senate Bill 1 will be found unconstitutional, and that the long-term ambition is to get Springfield out of the pension business. And the way to do that is, in no small measure, to shift the cost to districts. Importantly, we had what was my best meeting of the month as well, the meeting at Croya with our middle and high school students. And one of the students, right away, told Mr. Rogers, look, you got to write this down. Two words, opportunities and possibilities, because that's what our district offers us. And I don't know if anybody has said it more clearly than that, and simply than that. We're looking for them to provide us feedback on things that we should be measuring over the next ten years. And one of the things that they were very clear on was, look, the ACT is really not an assessment of what we do in school. It's very disconnected from what we do in school, in fact. And that the district should look at that with a pretty jaundiced eye, because it really, to our students, is largely a game. We also got a lot of very meaningful feedback on Mr. Maher's group about how to administer student surveys, the social-emotional wellness surveys. A lot of very pointed stuff that, for example, that the adult lead-up to those surveys makes a very big difference. One of those things being, if the adult comes in the room and says, look, you have twenty minutes, hurry up and get this done, we've got some other things we need to take care of, there's an entirely different level of response. Our students suggested, look, don't give kids twenty minutes. Give them the entire hour, and allow them to provide open-ended responses to things. And you really get some very meaningful feedback. So, what other things? From the elementary, we got a different set of information from them, and I shared that with the elementary board. I wanted to very briefly show the size of the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory, which Mr. Maher has been very instrumental in discussing with us. And it's about 135 pages long, sizable in a big binder. It's going to provide all sorts of important information. Some of the feedback that we got from students on, they took a look through this. Some of the really interesting things was the focus that our students had on respect for diversity, and also their view of, the question of whether or not we feel safe in school really isn't the right question for us. The right question for us is whether we feel emotionally safe saying what we think around our friends and our classmates. Those kinds of questions are ones that will really get to how well we really feel when we're in the four walls of the school, because none of us is really concerned that there's some violent act is going to take place in school. So there's a lot of really good stuff that we got from our students. One of the nice things about the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory is that the company that does this only does social and emotional education, and that there's a student, a parent, and a community component to it, along with the staff component. So we're really going to have a lot of very rich information on this. So I'd like to thank Mr. Maher, and like to thank our students. Luke was one of those that joined us. Our students are always our best ambassadors, and I can't think of another instance where they were more so than at Croya a few weeks ago, and really contributed to the better execution of what we do as an administrative team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic, and Luke and Lena. Now we're at the point where we're welcoming any members of the public who'd like to speak. Seeing none, we'll move to reports. And who do we have first? We've got Ms. Fagel. Ms. Fagel's going to give us an update on the assessment report.
Good evening. Mr. Rogers is going to join me. This is an annual update for the Board of Education on our standardized assessments. And I'd like to start by thanking the Education Committee that we met with last week, that gave our team some really valuable feedback on how to best report our standardized assessment data, and also show you the bridge towards a broader picture of achievement and growth in the district with our new strategic plan that we're in the process of finalizing. So this evening, we're going to take you through the most recent results. This is our alphabet soup of standardized assessments, ACT, PSAE, Advanced Placement, and then the upcoming PARC exams, just to give you a quick snapshot of what that will look like beginning in March for our students. So starting with our, what we call our class of ACT scores, Mr. Rogers will just take you through the next few slides. These scores are based on the class of 2014 students' most recent ACT exam, the last ACT exam they sat for. So not necessarily their highest score, although while typically it is their highest score. And it's not necessarily the one they take as part of the state test. It is their last ACT exam.
So a quick look at the chart shows that we've had a slight increase in recent years. This year, we ended up at 26.3. And again, that is the most recent ACT exam that was given. You'll notice that there are two other short data point lines that we have right there. In the year 2013, the state of Illinois decided that they were going to treat students with IEPs differently. And so that data was then going to be incorporated into the general scores. Just for sake of comparison, we drew a top line right there, which would represent what our scores would have looked like under the old system. So we are seeing some growth. And then on the bottom line, we're showing our students that have an IEP. One of the things that you do when you look at data, it's not just looking at data because it represents a number, but how can we grow? How can we do better? And so I think it affirms many of the things that we're doing well at the school. But it also affirms the things we talked about in terms of the Fertura Report, in terms of equity and access. How can we do a better job bridging the gap for all students? And how can we do a better job at serving all students? Just comparing with the state score, you can see the state is always somewhere around just under 21. We ended up at 26.3. The last point I would like to say about the ACT, there is value in ACT. It is still the test that is used for by most colleges, particularly colleges in the Midwest, but it is actually gaining the majority vote, I guess you would say, for all colleges across the country. You know, that being said, we're in a good spot. We'd always like to do better, but we'd like to do better in smart ways. How can we move that number? By having kids having more engaging experiences, kids having more relevant and meaningful experiences. So drawing that connection. And as Superintendent Simic mentioned, we talked to students about this as part of our day at Croya. And students said, well, you know, ACT is, it's almost sometimes a separate exercise from school. But I think it's more important that we can see that as part of what we do at school, and how can we improve that? As you look here, some people may say, well, there's a little fluctuation. The fluctuation you might see in the last couple of years, I think, is almost, you can't necessarily say it's growth or decline, because it also can represent variation in the different classes and where they're coming in. This next slide talks about, in comparison, how we're doing a national percentile. I think this is important, because a 26 in science is not the same thing as a 26 in English or 26 in mathematics. They are normed differently. And so you can see part of the scores. We look at ACT and look at where are there areas that we can grow. Again, just one data point, we've talked about lots of different data points throughout the strategic planning, mission-visioning process. And so as you look here, we seem to be doing well on the writing test, which is something that has been redeployed with the ACT. It fell off, state funding had dropped off for that. Our composite score, around 83, 87 percentile. So again, you look for areas of growth. And so our kids are writing well. Why is our reading score one of the lowest in terms of percentiles? Now, if you had just looked at the raw score, you would say, well, that's great. But when you actually compare it to a national average, you can see there's definitely area for growth. That being said, when we look at the new standards, we look at things like Common Core, close reading, reading for information, citing text, text-based questions, is a big part of Common Core. So when we start to set our sights on what type of work we need to be doing with our faculty, this data, I think, will inform some better practices. And I'll let Lauren take the next one.
So that takes us to the Prairie State Achievement Exam, which in 2014, April 2014, was the last year that that exam was administered. It's a two-day exam. Day one is the ACT. This past spring, writing was reintroduced and funded by the state, which was definitely a benefit for our students. The ACT with writing is a score that's more useful for them to report to colleges. And then day two, which has traditionally been difficult for all high schools to motivate students, they've kind of expended a lot of their energy day one, doing their best on the ACT, knowing that they can use that score for college-admission purposes. Day two is a different set of tests that are the work keys, which is developed by ACT, and then state-developed tests in reading, math, and science. Our 2014 PSAE results, you'll see on the next slide, are very consistent from years past, but we're in the 84th, all the way up to the 89th percentile, with students meeting or exceeding the state standards. We're well above the state average. You can see just the history from 2005 up to 2014. Consistently, we're well above the state average. And in 2014, overall, in both reading and math, 85.4% of our students met or exceeded state standards. This information is no longer used for school accountability. That is the result of Illinois finally getting a waiver, a flexibility waiver, from the federal government with regard to the accountability measures in No Child Left Behind. This was the year that 100% of students were supposed to be meeting or exceeding state standards. So for all intents and purposes, this year, if that measure were still in place, all schools in Illinois would be considered failing schools. So in an effort to avoid that PR disaster, many years ago, as we saw that coming, the state was advocating to get flexibility with regard to the No Child Left Behind. And we've seen the benefits of that in terms of some of the bureaucracy being removed from our work here in the district. Moving on to a different standardized test, the Advanced Placement Test. We offer a comprehensive advanced placement program at Lake Forest High School. This is as many, if not more, than our surrounding high schools in terms of the courses that we offer for students. Students can sign up for these courses starting in their sophomore year. None of them are currently designed, really, for freshmen. And one of the big efforts we've been making over the past year is to remove systemic barriers and give more students the opportunity to choose to take advanced placement courses. This is the most rigorous coursework we offer, and we believe that all students should have the opportunity to access that if they choose. We're excited to add to our offerings with the first two courses, Chinese Language and Culture. We now have students who are moving through the Mandarin Program, who are definitely in a position to sit for that exam. And then English Language and Composition, which is typically a sophomore or junior-level class. Most likely, we'll be offering it to our juniors. This is a very common class, and it's kind of a complement to the AP English Literature course, a very accessible course for students. And so we're looking forward to adding that to our English course offerings. The next two courses that we're adding are really, really exciting. We are part of a very selective College Board pilot. Only ten high schools in Illinois were selected to participate in piloting two AP courses. One is called Research, and one is called Seminar. And these are really a sign of what's to come with regard to AP. We'll be bringing you an update later in the year with regard to what these courses look like. But they're very much about reading, writing, and thinking skills for students researching. The content is secondary, and the skills are primary, which is very much the direction that we're taking our curriculum, the content serving as a vehicle, more than being the number-one priority, because content is so accessible. Our Advanced Placement scores are really, really unusual. At this point in 2014, our students who took the exams, and you don't have to take the exam, that is an option for students who take the course, most do. But 97% of the students taking exams, I'm sorry, 97% of the scores are considered passing, which is a three, four, or five. And the scale is one, two, three, four, or five. So 97% of the exams scored were passing. That is significantly higher than surrounding districts. And we believe that's because, first and foremost, our students and our teachers are doing an outstanding job preparing for these tests. But we have a very small population of students taking the tests compared to other high schools. So we do anticipate, in when we remove some of the barriers and we give more kids access to these advanced placement courses, we fully anticipate that we might see that 97% number drop. And we're comfortable with that, because we're very well-versed in the research that shows that students who take the course are in a better position to persist in college than students who don't. Students who take the course and sit for the exam are in an even better position to persist in college. And then finally, students who take the course, sit for the exam, and pass the exam are in the best position to persist in college. This is new data that we're collecting, and this is really the metric that we're using to measure what I was just talking about in terms of increased access. This is AP and honors both. We believe, we see lots of barriers to both levels of these courses. And last year, 27% of our students were enrolled in at least one AP or honors course. And this year, that jumped up five percentage points. We feel that is mostly due to the Science Department's willingness to remove all prerequisites from their AP courses. And they saw a 32% increase in enrollment just in their AP science courses. We're just in the process of collecting retention data. And we know, at least anecdotally, and we're just confirming, that the retention rate is very, very high, in terms of very few kids dropping from that AP course. So it's one thing to get them into the course, it's another to, you know, ensure success for the students in the course. PARC is coming? I think I forgot that you were going to do that. I'm on a roll. Okay. PARC is here. So you, last year, heard me possibly talk about these assessments. This is the next generation of standardized assessments. They are online, they're web-based, and they are more interactive. They are tasks that represent what the Common Core state standards are asking us to do. They're also tasks that we believe are valuable for our students. And that's important to know. Despite all of the logistical issues that we'll face, we do believe these are valuable assessments. We feel at this time they're too long and too much time on the part of our students, but we do feel that they will give us valuable information on how well our students are mastering essential skills. Schools will no longer be measured on achievement alone. That's a big change for high-performing districts like Lake Forest. We will be measured on how our students grow. And it will be how our individual students grow, not comparing one cohort- And it will be how our individual students grow, not comparing one cohort to the next cohort, but actual student growth from year to year. When Park is fully implemented, or if, I should say, Park is ever fully implemented, students would be tested all the way from grades three through 11. This year, funding will only allow for an English Language Arts test to all juniors and then an Algebra II test to students in math courses aligned to Algebra II. That will be a combination of freshmen, sophomore, and juniors. There are two testing windows, one in March and one in April, bridging over to May. The AP testing window falls right in the middle of that end-of-year assessment there on the bottom. So you've heard a lot about the challenges, student motivation, the AP testing window being in there, the fact that high schools are using different criteria to determine who takes the English Language Arts and the math assessment. That's gonna make it difficult to compare the data. Obviously, we're concerned about lost instructional time. And next year, we'll be in a much different position logistically because hopefully, more of our students will have access to personal devices throughout the day. But right now, our freshmen, who not that many of them will be testing, are the only ones who have that, that Chromebook. So we're working around those, just like all of our colleagues. We have a preparation team that meets twice a month, and we just keep plugging away and putting together schedules and starting to communicate with parents. So as I said at the beginning, this report really is evolving into what we hope will be an annual update, at least annual, on our strategic plan. And look at that cool arrow. We definitely want to start to measure more than just standardized test scores. And I think that came out in our strategic planning or our mission, vision process, that we're really concerned about not just achievement but growth, and not just academic achievement and growth, but social and emotional growth as well. So we'll be looking at our college completion data. We're really looking forward to that. We're in the process of obtaining that data through National Student Clearinghouse. It can link directly to Naviance, which hopefully you're familiar with, is our very popular college planning tool that counselors use with students and parents. We'll be looking at measuring student social, emotional growth. And we'll be continuing under John Maher's leadership with the use of the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory, which was administered at Lake Forest High School in 2007 and 2010. And so we'll be administering that again this year in 2014 and hopefully on an annual basis going forward. Staff and community climate, we'll be using the same Comprehensive School Climate Inventory to administer this, but we'll try to get a better return rate than what we see was received in 2010. But it'll be nice to have the same tool used for all of our feedback from students, staff, and community. Technology usage, you heard last month that we are having a really high attendance rate in terms of receiving on-demand professional development for our teachers in our, what we call our yoga studio. And of course, we'll be measuring our progress towards ensuring a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And this will be measured by documented curriculum maps and common assessments in courses. Really, even though that's last on the slide, I would say that is by a long shot the single most important thing we can do to ensure our students' achievement and growth. And growth is the name of the game. It's the name of the game for the state. It's definitely the emphasis in both of our districts here in Lake Forest. We're very excited to have Dr. Carol Dweck coming. That was brought to us by working with Andy Duran and Lead and Mr. Simic. And her visit will just, I think, confirm and even jumpstart further this community conversation about the emphasis on growth versus achievement. Not to say achievement doesn't matter, but we really wanna honor students' and adults' growth. Thank you.
Any questions?
Not a question, but I just want to commend all of you who've been working on, not just this report, but everything that went into it. This is really hard work that you're doing, and it's work that we've been talking about for several years now, about finding better ways to measure what's really important for our students. And I'm very, very excited that we are really doing it now. And couple that with the great administrative team we've got right now, who have a lot of new ideas and a lot of ambitious plans for our students. And I think that this just really bodes well for, for the near and long-term future of our students' success.
Thank you.
Ms. Fagel, can you comment on the option to take Park or not take Park? Is there any update on that?
As of now, districts are moving forward with the mandate from the state that all students in grades three through eight need to take the Park exams. And then at the high school level, students who are taking courses aligned with the English III, which translates to our juniors, and students taking courses that align with the Algebra II standards, take the test. So we're operating under that assumption. There is constant conversation going on at the policy groups, at the administrative groups, superintendents, assistants, superintendents, principals. Obviously, with the recent election, we certainly are thinking, you know, there, there could be a change. But this, we, we have to test our students under No Child Left Behind. We have to give an assessment that measures language arts and math. And as much as we would like the option to give the ACT, that doesn't align with the grades three-through-eight assessment. And there is no other assessment for grades three-through-eight. The ISAT is retired, it's gone, they haven't made a new one. So right now, we're going forward with, with this, and we're trying to make the best of it.
Lauren, are you aware of any colleges that accept Park as an, as a component of their entrance?
No, that will be a game changer. And the Park Consortium has gone from 21 states down to 12. So they are now sitting at 12 member states plus DC. So they have lost considerable ground. Potentially, I see a merger of the two major consortiums. And I think then, they might have the kind of leverage that they would need to get colleges and universities to take this score as a college entrance score. But right now, no colleges or universities have said, they haven't even come close to saying that they will use the score.
I had another question. So from an HCT perspective, have, have you been tracking how many times the kids take the test? How many are seeking outside-school support in order to, you know, improve their speed and efficiency, learn the tricks of the trade on how to score better, and all those elements? Along with, you know, what we think is just the, the normal success of our kids?
We can drill down and see the number of times the students have taken the test. We don't have any hard data on outside help. Anecdotally, we hear from our counselors and our teachers and our leaders that almost all students access some type of help, whether it's private tutoring or it's a class. And, and there's definitely a lot to be said for the strategies of taking the test. But there are also ways, like Barry said, to move that number. And it's an important number for our students and their families without banking on that. So I believe that it's also the school's responsibility to enhance the reading and the math skills so that students are prepared for that. But anecdotally, we're told that many students access outside help.
Have, is there another metric? I mean, I, it's, it's, I mean, everybody does it, right? Here's our test scores and here's the state.
Right.
Well, I don't know that we're used to comparing ourselves to the state. In all the conversations I've been involved in, state isn't exactly the bar we're trying to, you know, hurdle. Is there, is there another data point from similar districts, similar size? Something that may help us kind of really get a more effective comparator?
So many of the newspaper rankings that you've heard a lot about, US News and World Report, they will use that ACT score as a component, and that's where we see typically where we fall. We can certainly put together like a benchmark set of our peer districts. I will tell you that when the, oops, shoot. When ACT started reporting the data altogether, all student scores reported, some schools didn't see as significant as a drop as we did. So that, that gave us some questions to, some things to think about and talk about. But, so we, we could easily pull that data. I don't have it at hand, but we could easily pull it. I think with our peer schools, we're, we're pretty comparable. Your Highland Park, especially your Deerfield, your Glenn Burke North, your Nutria, we're definitely right up there at 26.3 as an average. That's, that's a pretty significant average.
I always think we have to tread a little bit carefully with those kinds of comparisons involving the ACT. Just because it's so easy to fall into the trap of thinking that that's the measurement, that that's the be-all, end-all, you know, it matters a great deal how we compare with, you know, with other schools and that. That it is important, but I, I think in the past, sometimes we've been guilty of, of overplaying the importance of the ACT and neglecting any other possible measures of, of our students' performance and success. So, you know, there, there is value in that, but we, we just have to remember that that's not really the focus.
It's one data point, it just happens to be the one that, you know, goes on those college admissions. But it certainly is not a full picture.
To that end, can you elaborate a little bit on the National Student Clearinghouse, the college completion data that you're looking for?
So National Student Clearinghouse is an organization, and I believe they have around 95% of colleges and universities across the country sending them data. So it's an incredibly high representation. And they actually grab data three times a year from colleges and universities in terms of kids entering mid-year, dropping out, or transferring. And so we're really excited that, that data has been there, it just hasn't been captured. And again, it links directly to Naviance. So really, by the first of next year, by January, we should have a report that will tell us our students' persistence through, all the way up to six years. And it doesn't measure how they do in college. It just measures completion, number of years, and from which university. And then if there were changes in enrollment from one university to another.
Thank you.
I can't resist going back to the question of the ACT and the various problems that the ACT poses for us as, as a comparison tool. The, one of the things that becomes pretty clear is if we want our students, and our students at, at Croya the other night underlined this for us, if we really wanted to pursue a strategy that was most likely to increase our achievement on our ACT scores, we would really be best served facilitating some sort of outside help for them on test-taking strategies. Because the ACT is not reflective of a great deal of what it is that we do in school. It's not connected to any curriculum that we have, per se. A lot of the math, for example, is far below the levels of math that our students get to in their math courses. So there is, there is no calculus or statistics or multi-variable calculus, much less on the ACT. Reading, the, the, the science score is actually much more reflected by the kid's reading ability than it is anything to do with science. There's really no science content, per se, in the science section of the ACT. The math section is more predictive of students' science performance in college than is the science section. So it, it is, it's always a struggle with ACT. At the same time, there are problems with the test. It's also the one that, without any question, is the one that is most important for our students' future in their college applications. It's not like it's not an important test, it's simply not connected to much of what we do in school. And so using that as, as a reflection of how we're doing as a school isn't necessarily all that representative. Many schools don't have kids that take the test five, six, seven, eight times, whereas in our school, absolutely, we have a lot of kids that do that. So it's, it's a, it's a tricky thing. The things that, that we think long-term are, are of greatest significance for us as a community wind up being things like our college completion. Because that, that is a clear expectation from our community members. Look, your job is to get them ready for college. And then your, your success rate at college is, is what is, what we're really most interested in. So it's, like so many things that we do, it's complex.
Any other questions?
One last question. You'd mentioned that the numbers of states participating in Park has declined. And I just recently heard that the number of states participating in Common Core has also declined. Where do you see both of those? You already mentioned Park, but what about Common Core? Because quite a few states have dropped out in the last year.
Right. So Illinois converted their learning standards, which were previously known as the Illinois Learning Standards, to the Illinois Learning Standards of the Common Core. So, you know, they, they basically adopted the state's standards. The only way they measure whether schools are teaching towards those standards are through the mandatory assessments. So they're really linked hand in hand. I think the board has heard me say many times that the standards themselves are really, really solid. They're very helpful, they provide an aligned K-12 sequence of skills. They don't drive our daily instruction, they're not mandated content, they're a really great resource for us. So, so whether or not Illinois stays with the Common Core, and I, I can't predict that, otherwise I wouldn't be standing here, I'd be out making more money. But, not that I'm complaining. Regardless, you know, the, I guess what I'm saying, Ted, is that the Common Core is not driving our daily life here by any means. I think we have a really healthy perspective on what the standards offer. So whether or not those stay the adopted Illinois standards, we're really gonna keep doing what we feel is best for kids. But they really are linked hand in hand with the assessments. The states that have dropped out of Park have not all kind of also dropped out of the Common Core. Some of them have just said, we're just not ready to give this assessment. Our teachers aren't ready, our students aren't ready, the logistics aren't ready, it's not a valid assessment yet, we're not gonna do it. So they all haven't kind of abandoned completely the standards and the assessments. And then others, others have, other states have said, we're, we're, we're gonna do our own standards. They might look a lot like the Common Core, but they're not the Common Core. Yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And up next, we have Mr. Mayor and Mr. Duran from Lead to provide a update report on the Illinois Youth Survey.
Good evening. I'm Andy Duran, the Executive Director of Lead. Thanks for having me here tonight. Want to give a quick report on the early results of the 2014 Illinois Youth Survey as it relates to Lake Forest High School. And I want to do this really quickly, but I want to throw over a few key points. The Illinois Youth Survey is developed and administered through the Center for Prevention and Research Development at University of Illinois. It's administered every two years in Lake Forest districts and also in Lake Bluff 65. We've been collecting data in this community since 2006. And you see that the vast majority of our students in all three districts participate. District 115 had 83% of enrolled students complete the 2014 Illinois Youth Survey, which is much higher than most districts in the state. Want to talk about quickly about credibility and integrity. There are four ways that we know that the data we get is actually credible. Number one, the survey includes fake drug questions. In this year's survey, that fake drug was Nazofan, which doesn't actually exist. So if a student answers that they've taken this drug, their entire result is thrown out. That's the first way that we know it's credible. The second way is that response consistency is analyzed. So for example, if a student reports that they have not had a drink of alcohol in the past 30 days, but they report that they've had been an episode of binge drinking in the past two weeks, they've obviously then had inconsistent responses, the entire result is thrown out. We also know that the community trends are consistent. If you look at our data from 2006 and you compare it in a cohort trend, which you're gonna see in just a moment, to now, we sort of have the same trends. There's really not many outliers, we can tell that it's really building up a story. And number four, Lead and Speak Up, our coalition employ an independent evaluator, who actually we give the data to, and, and he helps us, or they help us create our community story. So it's not just validated by our little office, or the district is validated by a complete outside third party that does this for a living. 93% of completed surveys are considered valid as it relates to the entire Illinois Youth Survey. So what does this do for us? It covers many topics, as you know, not just substance abuse, but also mental health and depression, bullying, fitness and nutrition, safety at school, also some other key risk and protective factors. We use a cohort analysis rather than compare, you know, seniors in 2012 to the seniors in 2014. We look at a cohort. We look at a class from the time they're in sixth grade to the time they're in twelfth grade. We think that builds a better picture. So the first thing I'm going to share is past thirty-day use of alcohol. Now, in two thousand and six, you don't see this on this chart, seventy-six percent of our twelfth graders in two thousand and six reported using alcohol once every thirty days, which is a staggeringly high number. Uh, the good news is that we've gotten that significantly reduced. And when I say "we," I mean the entire community. What the district has done has been great. What the middle school districts have done to prepare high school students has been great. What's been gone, gone in the community during those years has been great. Two thousand and twelve, the class of two thousand, um, twelve, which is the blue line you see, reported when they were in twelfth grade, sixty-three percent reported drinking every, at least once every thirty days. Uh, that number came down to fifty-five percent, which is a significant decrease. It's actually our largest percentage decrease in any two-year span since we've been collecting data, which is great. Also saw a similar decrease among, uh, the, the cohort, the next cohort, the class of two thousand and sixteen, the class ahead of them when they were in tenth grade, uh, reported drinking, uh, at a much higher rate, thirty-nine percent compared to thirty-two percent. Does that make sense before I move on? Okay. Want to look at binge drinking. This is a number we were significantly concerned about. The question is, think back over the last two weeks, how many times have you had five or more alcoholic drinks in a row? And we're pulling out the measure with the answer one or more occasions of binge drinking. Now, we were concerned about this because in two thousand and twelve, the seniors reported binge drinking at forty-seven percent, which is a thirty percentage point de, uh, increase from when they were in tenth grade. A significant increase between tenth and twelfth grade. While we expect some increase, that was concerning. So a lot of work was done to message about binge drinking and the effects, harming effects of alcohol, to the point that this past year's seniors, um, reported using at thirty-four percent. Still a fairly concerning number. That's over one-third of our seniors reporting binge drinking every two weeks. However, uh, much, much significant, you know, much higher, or much decrease compared to what we saw before. Again, the most significant two-year decrease that we've seen in any two-year period. So the story here, along with the thirty-day use, is that we're seeing some results, but we have a lot more work to do, obviously. Looking at marijuana, uh, just go through this really quickly. Uh, marijuana rates are, uh, twelfth grade reported using about twenty-six percent once every thirty days, compared to fourteen percent of the tenth graders. Uh, this is consistent with what we see in Lake County and what we see state and, and na, nationwide. Um, we actually expected a, an increase in this compared to the cohort before because of all the medical marijuana legalization and messaging that's been going on. But we actually were one of the communities, uh, in our state that saw a decrease, which is, which is a good thing, but still a quarter of our seniors are smoking pot at least once every thirty days. Looking at, uh, past thirty-day use of prescription drugs. Uh, during the past thirty days, have you used a prescription drug not prescribed to you? It's a simple yes or no question on the Illinois Youth Survey. Um, we don't have the full trend report because the questions changed, uh, between, right before the two thousand and twelve survey was administered. Um, but you see here, uh, twelve percent of the class of two thousand and twelve seniors reported using, down to four percent in the class of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, so what we're seeing in Lake County, what we're seeing in other parts of the state, what we're seeing in other parts of the country, where one in six students are, are reporting using, uh, a prescription drug that's not prescribed to them, we are not seeing that same thing here, uh, which is a good sign. Also, one reason our heroin number is lower than it, we see in other parts of the county. Uh, looking at the question that asks, "Have you used a prescription drug to get high in the past thirty days?" Again, much lower. Uh, almost a sixty percent decrease from the cohort ahead. Uh, so only four percent of the seniors and actually, uh, five percent of the tenth graders. This is one of those areas where, uh, the tenth grade number was a bit higher than the twelfth grade number for whatever reason. Um, but again, much lower than what we, what we see in other parts of the country, or other parts of the county and state, uh, which is a good, good sign. Whatever we're all doing, um, as it relates to prescription drugs, is seemingly working. Perception of parental disapproval. This is a measure we look at, and the question is, "How wrong do your parents feel it would be for you to drink beer, wine, or hard liquor at least once or twice a month?" And we're pulling out just the measures wrong and very wrong. Uh, we, what we see here pretty clearly is that as students age, the perception of parental disapproval declines. This doesn't necessarily mean that the parents do disapprove less. It just means that the students think they do, for whatever reason. Maybe the conversation stopped, maybe the, uh, the, the barriers are less, maybe the consequences are, are lessened, whatever it is. Students perceive that their parents disapprove less. Uh, if you look at the two slides together, the left-hand slide is the one I just showed you. The right-hand slide is the first one I showed you, past thirty-day use. It's pretty clear in our community, uh, that as perception of parental disapproval declines, uh, usage increases. There's other factors to consider besides just that one, but this is a pretty powerful one, and it's really speaks to the importance of in-home conversations, parent education, and making sure parents are aware of how to start and continue those conversations, that they don't stop as the students enter high school, but they keep going, uh, through that, and that they start young.
Hey, Andy. Quick question. So, you know, one of the things that keeps going through my mind is then, okay, what does freshman year in college look like? Right? Which, which is a completely different element. And the, my only point being, you know, what you're, what, what we're trying to do is properly educate our kids on not only what the law is and what's right and wrong, but what the associated behavior aspects are and the harmful nature of, of all this. Is there, do, are you aware of anything anecdotal that then shows the minute you get out of high school and you show up on campus your freshman year, all bets are off? And then the work that we've done isn't really exactly as intended? Do you, you follow what I'm saying?
I D M. So one thing we've talked about doing is trying to pull together, uh, freshmen, sophomores, juniors in college when they're home from the summer and just do some sort of survey based off the Illinois Youth Survey questions that we can get a feel for their behavior. I know Stanford University did a study, and I'd have to dig out exactly when it was. And what they did is they did a study of, um, freshmen at Stanford who lived on campus. Uh, and they surveyed students, and they looked at a cohort of students who didn't drink in high school, students who did drink in high school, students from the United States, and students from Europe, where the drinking age is different. And what they found is that students who did not drink in high school were much less likely to drink in college. Um, now, a lot of people don't believe that, that study. A lot of people think that you, you know, the students who don't drink in high school and get into that environment in college are more likely to drink, but actually, most of the research shows the opposite. So if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to pull that out. But that's, that's the one study that I know of. I'm sure there are others. Uh, but I, I actually found that unique because it's, it speaks to the question of, um, the, our drinking age in the United States compared to the European drinking age, and also students who drink and don't drink in high school, et cetera. Is that sort of what you?
Yeah, no. And it just follows the, you know, the disapproval piece, right? As time goes on, parents disapprove less, the drinking goes up, and it's the old, you know, if a tree falls in the forest and no one's there to hear it, to make a sound. So when your kids, our kids are all in college, and we're not there to reinforce that on a regular basis.
Right, sure. Anecdotally, I can tell you, teens here in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff will say that those who don't drink, will say the number one reason they don't drink is because of their parents' influence. Uh, I mean, so it's pretty clear even among students here that that's an important driving factor, protective factor. Uh, I want to look at perception of parental disapproval as it relates to marijuana. Similar to the alcohol, uh, what we see here is again, as students age, parental, uh, disapproval, uh, they, they perceive that their parental disapproval declines. Pretty consistent numbers, uh, as you look at twelfth grade. Uh, we had that one outlier in the class of two thousand and ten, but other than that, um, we, middle school numbers, the good news is the class of, uh, two thousand and eighteen, which is hard to see up here, but it's that black line in the top left. The numbers in, uh, at eighth grade was much higher than it was, uh, two cohorts below them. So that's, that's a good sign that the middle schools are hopefully preparing students for high school better, and hopefully that continues. Uh, again, looking at these two things together, like we did for alcohol, past thirty-day use is, as perception of parental disapproval declines, usage increases. Um, one thing we've talked about doing is doing a, a survey of the community as it relates to adult behavior and perceptions of, of marijuana, because I think that, no, those numbers would be staggering, actually, if we were to look at them. Want to look at perception of risk or harm. Alcohol, what we see here is that, um, our numbers are pretty consistent. Actually, as students age, perception of harm has increased in our community. So whereas some middle schoolers, um, you know, report eighty to eighty-five percent, uh, thinking that alcohol is harmful in sixth and eighth grade, actually the numbers are a bit higher, uh, in, when they get to twelfth grade. Um, so we hope that trend, uh, continues as well. Uh, one reason for that might be because they see more alcohol, so they're more likely to see their friends having consequences or themselves, maybe they've had a consequence, but whatever it is, there's a slight increase in perception of harm. Uh, look at marijuana, it goes the opposite. Not surprising, uh, perception of harm, uh, has gone down, uh, with every cohort and as students age. The interesting thing about this is almost always, if you look at national data, when perception of harm decreases, usage increases, we have the opposite. Perception of harm decreased, but so did usage, uh, which was, which was good, uh, here. We want to try to build up perception of harm, but it has not translated to an increased use in our community, which is a good thing. Uh, just quickly to look at heroin, uh, very nominal in the middle school. I think one total middle schooler of our entire middle school community reported using heroin. In the high school, it's one percent, down slightly from one point oh six percent. Doesn't sound like a big number, and it isn't compared to other parts of the county and state. However, that's still about seventeen students. Uh, so it's, it's worth noting that there is heroin in the high school. There's heroin in every high school in Lake County and probably in Illinois. But it isn't as much of a concern here as what we might see in other areas. And that is consistent with our prescription drug numbers as well, because in the communities where there's a higher prescription drug and opiate abuse, uh, heroin is also more widely abused. Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to John to talk about what the schools have been doing, what the district has been doing to actually lead to some of that success.
Hi. Kind of the direction I wanted to steer us now is the fact that, uh, you, you just saw a lot of data on substance abuse, but that substance abuse and mental illness are not mutually exclusive. The first bit of data, uh, that I have up there is that persons diagnosed with mood or anxiety disorders are about twice as likely to suffer also from drug abuse disorder. Uh, the second one, uh, gender is also a factor in specific patterns of observed comorbidities. Uh, so what happens is that males have a tendency to suffer more from antisocial personality disorder, while women have higher rates of mood and anxiety disorders. Those are all risk factors leading to substance abuse. So as a school district, as a high school, you know, we, we take a look at those numbers. We take a look at the marijuana, we take a look at alcohol, and, you know, we try to do things that are directed at the substance abuse, but what is the bigger picture? The bigger picture is the social, emotional well-being of our students and what leads to the substance abuse. So what we've done, uh, social workers, psychologists, and SAP, we're constantly monitoring students. Uh, we do this through our core teams. Uh, we, we do this anecdotally, just through conversation, uh, whether it's grades popping up or attendance. Uh, we're, we're constantly on students, and, and we, we have what I feel is to be a great network of professionals, uh, just constantly working to do what's best for our kids. Uh, social workers have gone to all the counselors, uh, freshman seminars to connect face-to-face with freshmen. We started doing that, uh, about three years ago, uh, after, uh, the tragedies that, uh, went through the high school. We really felt that every freshman coming in needs to have a face-to-face with our social workers. And, uh, we kind of feel like that has worked out really well. Health and Wellness for Life, uh, with the freshman waiver gone, uh, gone, a majority of freshmen, uh, are taking this class. In that class, they've done an amazing job developing curriculum around substance use and abuse, uh, around also mental illness, uh, mental health, and, and social, emotional issues. Uh, other classes with social, emotional curriculum, uh, include advanced health and psychology. Uh, these are primarily taken by juniors and seniors. Uh, the student support team, uh, which is consisting of the social workers and psychologists, uh, and our SAP person, has developed shout-outs. So pretty much you can, we call them letters to the loo. You go to the bathroom and there's letters up all in the bathroom, kind of saying how to de-stress and how to get help. And, uh, you know, it's kind of interesting, when we were at Croya, we actually had a couple of students during those focus groups say, "Those letters to the loo are great," uh, because what else are you going to do? You might as well read. There's also, uh, social, emotional focus groups, um, like Light, Enjoy the Journey Alliance. Emotional Wellness, Staff and Students Using Common Language are, are core. Things such as empathy, integrity, honesty, accountability, and responsibility. Those are things that, uh, we feel like we want to build on, we're going to continue to build on, we're going to continue that common language. Peer Training, uh, Croya comes to the high school and co-teaches, uh, with our social workers, our SAP people, our psychologists, uh, what's pretty much a course on how to be a good friend. Uh, how to listen, how to actively listen, how to get help, uh, how to just be an all-around good support system for the people around you. Obviously, there's high school consequences for offenders of, of our tobacco, drug, and alcohol policy. These are also coordinated with the, uh, athletic policy. Uh, lastly, our community partnerships. Uh, I am very proud to say that I think we do a great job, uh, working with Croya. They are in our school all the time. We are over there, constantly communicating, constantly working to help our kids. Uh, again, Andy here does a great job. Did a nice job presenting all of our facts on the IYS. Uh, we work very closely with Lead. We work very closely with Speak Up and Chris Condon. We attend all those board meetings. Uh, and then the Community Wellness Task Force. Uh, that's, that's something that's very dear and close to my heart. Uh, I think we've done a wonderful job. We meet, uh, three or four times a year, depending, uh, with the help of Dr. Reinecke from Northwestern, uh, the help of Lake Forest Hospital. Uh, we, we have worked really hard on trying to develop this communication piece. It's pretty much up there, there's a lot of abbreviations of everybody that kind of goes to these meetings, but it, you know, it pretty much says all the school, uh, most of the schools in the area, the hospitals, um, social service agencies, they all come to the meeting. We talk, we discuss what's going on in the community. Uh, one of the best things that came out of this was Text-a-Tip. Text-a-Tip, which is still, uh, currently going on, is, uh, pretty much, the, the only thing, and, and Andy has helped develop it greatly, is, uh, is a, is a text, is a mental health text service. So pretty much twenty-four, seven, uh, mental health, uh, whether it's, uh, psychologists or social workers or on the other line of a text, uh, system. It's vetted up, it's completely confidential, it's vetted through, uh, this, this place in Canada, it comes back down, there's no way to track it. And what students can do is they can, and then, be honest, this is for anybody in the community, including adults, they can text a mental health professional anytime, twenty-four, seven, get a response, and, and talk about whatever they need to talk about, get whatever suggestions they need and whatever help they need. Um, it, it's something that, uh, we are very proud of, it's something that's working. At some point, I could always come back and talk about it and give you the numbers on what's going on with that. Uh, but that has come directly from the Community Wellness Task Force. And, uh, again, I, I think, uh, we're, we're doing a good job with those numbers. We need to continue doing more, and we will continue doing more. Any questions for either of us?
I, I have a question. And first, thank you, uh, for a great, great presentation. The correlation is so striking with the parent approval and, and, and the, the usage, and a lot of attention, obviously, going into educating the kids. But I'm just wondering what opportunities, I don't know if it's APT, or what's, what's the channel to the parents for, for more people to see that data? Because that data, you don't have to editorialize too much. And I guess, just wonder what, if anything.
I mean, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So, um, we've tried in Lead to really step up our efforts as it relates to that. Uh, you know, we've, we've had some successes in some areas, and we've tried some things that didn't work in other areas. Uh, we've had record attendance, uh, this year already, and building on record attendance from last year at our, our events. We're coming out with new resources at Lead, uh, in partnership with, with the regular people we, we meet with, including people from all the school districts, about how do you talk to your kids about this? So we're coming out with a resource, that how do you talk to your kids about every substance at every age, from toddler through college, uh, just based on best practices and research and things like that? So, uh, we started a community conversation series, uh, where we're working with the schools. We did one at Lake Bluff Middle. We hope to do one in each district, uh, before the end of the school year, where we invite parents from that school to come in and just talk about these things. You know, we do a Parents and Teens in Law program. Uh, John and I are both on the panel for it. It actually takes place next week at, at the high school, um, where we talk to parents about, you know, here's the real issues, and here's what you can do about it, and here's the consequences and the rewards for, for healthy behavior. So, um, I think all of us working together, uh, coming together on the Community Wellness Task Force, all those things are, there's a lot of stuff happening here. I mean, there's a lot of communities envious of all the things that we're doing right here. Doesn't mean that we still don't have a lot more to do, though.
I'm just a little uncomfortable referring to that as a correlation, frankly. You did mention a couple of things in your presentation. One is that they're, um, you're, you're measuring students' perceptions of their parents' disapproval, but it doesn't necessarily reflect their parents' actual disapproval. And you also mentioned that there could be other factors than parents perceived or actual disapproval that could be related to the increasing levels of use. It's a reasonable assumption, I think, that we're making, but I would like to see more evidence of their actual correlation. On the other hand, because it is a reasonable assumption, if you try to address the, um, the parental disapproval part of it, and then you see, um, a decrease in usage, that will be some evidence that that probably was the case. But I guess, just statistically speaking, I wouldn't want to refer to that as a correlation. It's just an assumption that's being made on the basis of those observations.
I would agree, yeah. I mean, I think it, there's six years worth, or actually eight years worth of data that sort of tells that same story. So I would agree with you, there's a lot of reasons. Kids get older, they're more likely to engage in that risky behavior regardless of what their parents say. I think paired with the qua, the qualitative piece that we've done as well, through the focus groups we've done with parents and students over the past year and a half, um, sort of helps tell the story behind the, the quantitative piece, I guess. Some other time, I'd be happy to share that with you if it's of interest. But what we learned in, in those is that, uh, the majority of our parents stop talking about it when their kids get to high school, uh, or stop talking about it once their kids get to junior, senior year of high school. Uh, it was very, very clear here that that was a running theme. So you're right, it's statistically, there's a lot of reasons that could occur. Um, I'm pretty confident in saying that, no, having lived here, having worked with youth here, having been here- having been here a long time, I'm pretty confident to say that if we increase those conversations at home, we would see that usage decline. Other questions?
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we will move to Board Committee reports, and first up would be Board of Education Committee, Mrs. Snowbird.
Well, this will be easy. We met last week, Monday, and we had a dry run of the assessment report, so I need not report any further. Lauren and Barry have already done a better job than I could. Our next meeting is scheduled for the first week in February, I believe. We always leave it up to Lauren and Barry to let us know if they'd like to meet sooner, so of course, we're available if there's something that we should be discussing. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Powers for the Board Finance and Operations Committee.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met on Wednesday, October 22nd. We also, this is a public service announcement, we also have a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30. Ted, this is for you, the meeting is here, so we've conditioned you to go to East Campus, and now we're having the meeting here tomorrow, so hopefully...
They won't be playing this video until after the meeting's over, so...
Well, yeah, at least Ted will, so... But we talked about three things. We talked about the tax levy, we talked about refinancing some of the district debt, and then we had an extracurricular project, which was largely anchored in kind of gathering insights from all our extracurricular activities, and I'll touch on, I'll touch base on that in a minute. But in a, in a very swift, speedy way, you know, one of the things about the tax levy, it's really anchored in this property tax extension limitation law, which began back in the, Alan, what, late 80s-ish?
1991.
Okay, 1991. And generally speaking, what it was, it was put in place really is kind of a governor, if you will, to reduce the speed of inflation related to the actual tax increases associated with school districts. So if you think about it back in the 80s, property taxes, if, for example, it was 5% was the amount that was assessed by the district, as communities grew and developed, you know, the boards typically said, "Well, our rate stayed the same, it's 5%." But obviously, 5% of a much higher number over time ends up accumulating a significant amount of money for districts. So this law was put in place to kind of slow down what that looks and feels like. It's a really interesting dynamic, and Alan's gonna give us kind of a quick tutorial in a minute about what that looks like. But the interesting thing that I've experienced over the last year and a half, being a part of the board, and particularly within Finance and Operations, is really beginning to understand some of the weird nuances associated with Illinois law, and I'm saying that kindly. But I think Alan really says it best when he says, you know, as we go through this process as a board, and we have a responsibility 30 days in advance of the formal approval to bring forth a recommendation to the board, which we're doing this evening, to approve this levy, but we're really asking for money for a budget that isn't developed yet, for a tax rate that isn't yet known, I think is the, is the best way to put it. So it's, it's really a lot of science factored into kind of this somewhat dysfunctional timing of the calendar, which really forces us to try to guess, but we've, I think we've done a fantastic job in doing that. I think, I think the amount that we're asking for is about 1.9%, is that accurate? And we'll walk in, or we'll walk through momentarily to share with everybody what that looks like, so you get a better handle. But it's a really tough thing for the community to grasp, particularly for those that, that don't really understand kind of the genesis of how it came about, and it's really important that we start to do a better job of doing that. And Brittany and Jen and Alan have done a great job there. From a debt relief standpoint, I think the most important thing to note is we're paying attention to it, we realize there are some opportunities, much like all of us, that have a chance to refinance our mortgages. There's a point where you decide, is it worth doing it or not doing it? We're doing the exact same thing. Now, it's much different because we have the guidance of William Blair, an organization to help us think through that, and they're very effective and very good at this, so I don't want you to think that the community can sleep well knowing that it isn't me making that decision, because that would be very scary for a lot of people. But we're paying attention to it, we've got some great guidance, and that's something that we've, we've made the decision to kind of watch and monitor going forward. And then lastly, we've talked about this extracurricular project. And, you know, it's really important to note that, you know, on the, on the coattails of the tax levy, which helps us generate largely the funding that we have as an organization, there's lots of other things that go on within our school. And I'll cite three. We have APT and Stephanie Cook, who's the president of APT, and all the work that that organization does, and there's some substantial fundraising that happens that goes directly into our school. We have the Booster Club, and Steve Reimer, who heads that group and has for several years. The passion and commitment from folks on the Booster Club that, that invest a considerable amount of time and energy, helping us think through and support all those various activities. And then Liz Brandl, who is on the Lake Forest High School Foundation, one of their key projects, we talked about a little bit earlier, Mr. Rogers did, is the Innovation Incubator. So, so a lot of these projects are materializing from the community through a lot of private funds. So I think it's really important that we know and understand, moving forward, that, you know, it really does take a village sometimes, as you think about the time and talent and resources that, that many people within our community really expend on behalf of our kids. So it isn't just property taxes that are supporting what we're doing, it's, it's hundreds and hundreds of hours of folks that are, that are really doing a fabulous job volunteering and serving as fabulous mentors to our kids. So you'll hear more and more about that as we go through the year, and we learn more about it to share, but I think it's one of those things we don't talk enough about, because it's a fabulous benefit of being in this community, and I realize it happens throughout the state, and it happens throughout the country. But we're particularly blessed here, I think, in a lot of ways, and one of them is the volunteer spirit that exists within the community. So, so with that, that's the end of my official report, and I'll yield back the balance of my time, which I probably already used.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Mr. Albus, you've got a presentation then?
Moving on in the agenda to the tentative tax levy. Mr. Powers talked about the tax cap really acts as a governor on our revenue growth from, from taxes, and that's a pretty accurate description. What, what in essence it says is that the growth from one year to the next can only grow by the rate of inflation, with two exceptions, or three exceptions. One would be your bonded debt is dealt with separately, because when you issue debt, investors want to know they're gonna get paid back, and there's a set schedule. Also, the, the formula adjusts for new construction that comes into the district. Where the confusion comes into play is when we look at the CPI, and we know that for next year, it's 1.5%, but that's talking about in the aggregate. So if the seven of you represented all the homes in Lake Forest, the revenue growth derived from property taxes from your existing properties could not exceed more than 1.5% of the revenue derived from this year. However, individually, there's no such limitation. So Mrs. Sorenson, if your house were assessed with a 10% increase, and Mr. Mormons were assessed at a 2% increase, and everybody else is varied, you'd all pay different rates. But when you add them all together, the aggregate increase to the taxing body would be 1.5%. So that's a lot of the public confusion over the two decades that this has been in place, centers around that, because people hear that inflation number, say, "But my bill went up more than that, how can that be?" It's because the law deals with the aggregates. I'm gonna read the first couple paragraphs of my cover memo, and then I'm gonna go through some slides up here. This should be a two-way discussion. If there are questions along the way, if I'm not clear on something, please stop me and ask me to clarify. But annually, the Board of Education is asked to consider and adopt a tax levy. A tax levy is a request for property taxes to fund the school year that starts the following July. While the Board can levy or ask for any amount it desires, the amount of revenue actually received is limited by a formula contained in the Property Tax Extension Limitation Act. There are two components to the formula. One is the December year-over-year Consumer Price Index number that determines the aggregate allowable increase in property taxes on existing construction. That number for next year is already known and is 1.5%. The second component is the value of new construction within the district. In 2013, the non-TIF new construction figure was 9.8 million. While actual 2014 new construction will not be known until next spring, based on preliminary data, it is estimated to be 11.4 million. That preliminary data is a report that we received from the county. That would generate a revenue increase excluding bond and interest of 1.91%. Again, 1.5% from existing construction, and the other four tenths from new construction. Now, if the district's levy is equal to or greater than what the formula produces, the district will receive what the formula generates. So in other words, you could ask for $100 million, and it won't matter, because it'll be knocked back down to what the formula generates. However, if the district's levy is less than what the formula produces, it will only receive what is asked for. That amount then becomes our base, and this is very important, and all future year revenues are affected. Consequently, each year, staff projects what the tax cap formula will yield, and then develops a levy that is slightly higher to ensure that all available revenue under the cap is accessed. So as I said, new construction is a projected number. We also levy a little bit more, so that as we're building the budget, we have a little flexibility in where we allocate funds among our individual funds. In your packet is a sheet that looks somewhat like this. There's a lot of really good data here, and a lot of information that can be derived from this, and I'm more than willing to take time and walk through it, but that's not really the essence of what we're here to talk about. So I'm gonna ask you to take a little bit of a leap of faith with me, and let me synthesize this down. But the figures that we're talking about, we're projecting an increase of 1.91%. This is what the amount would be, and that is an increase over last year's number, which was here. So it's about a $655,000 increase. So if I synthesize this down, the inflationary increase on existing property would be $513,540. That's a pretty hard number, we know that already. The next number is gonna be really close, but it can vary a little bit, because we're working off an estimated new construction figure. But we would project that to be at $141,696, so total new dollars of $655,240. Now, I get asked almost every year, why do we need that increase? Well, the authors of the tax cap formula recognize that there is an inflationary cost to maintaining a consistent level of service, and that's, I hope to articulate that or show that in the next slide. So again, the top number's what we expect to get, and if we simply look at some of our largest costs, and our teacher salaries, we have a step cost in next year's contract of, it's somewhere around 2%, I think I had that number wrong, I think it's more like 2.7%, but that equates out to an increase of about $336,000. So that is just the inflationary cost of implementing the contract that was negotiated several years ago. Making an assumption of all our other salaries with a cost of living adjustment of 1.5%, and again, that is a projection, because that hasn't been established yet, we haven't developed that budget, that's about $166,000 inflationary trend. And then the Board of Education spends about $3 million a year on health insurance costs. Simply taking that and trending that at what I think is a conservative number of 5%, and I say conservative because the insurance co-op that I sit on, we use six on medical trends, and we're using double digits on RX trends. But simply taking it at a 5% increase, we're looking at $159,000. So you can see, just in those areas, we're eating up the new revenue growth that comes in. Another question I get is, well, enrollment's declining, so shouldn't our costs be going There are other components that impact our overall budget, and certainly, one of the biggest one is enrollment and staffing. And enrollment has been steady or declining, that has resulted in a slight decrease in staffing. The reason I pause there is, we also made some staffing reductions as we readjusted to the new revenue stream after the economy collapsed in '08. Utility costs, these don't always follow inflationary trends. Some years, they can go up 8%, the next year, they can drop 4% or 5%. Now, we participate in a co-op and buy our energy, our electricity and our gas through the co-op, and our intent in doing so is to normalize those costs, stabilize them over time, so we're not seeing the big up and down swings. Special education tuition costs. Now, there is an inflationary trend here, but it's also impacted by enrollment changes. One or two, and I've talked about this a lot, one or two special education students moving into the district who require outplacement services can impact us by $100,000 easily. Conversely, one or two students moving out of the district can save us. Reductions in other revenues, and I'm gonna drill down on that in a moment. And then it was mentioned earlier tonight, some things looming on the horizon, one could be SB 16. I don't have that factored in here, because I don't think we've seen a final version of that, but we do think there is something coming in regards to a pension cost shift. So there are a lot of things that impact the budget. Now, it's our job, and the reason we spend five to six months building a budget, is to drill down on these and assess each year, what are they individually doing? Are they going up, they going down? And then collectively, what does that mean when you measure that against our revenue This is an interesting chart. Now, a year or so ago, we went to Finance and Ops, and then the Board, and we subscribe to a service that allows us to go out and grab not only our data, but other school districts, excuse me, but very quickly go out and grab off our annual financial reports data that's submitted to the state. And what this chart is showing you, since 2007 through 2013, I didn't have 14 here, because when I built the graph, that wasn't available yet, it wasn't posted. If you look at our revenue from interest earnings in, what year is that, 2008, slightly over $900,000, and within two years, it dropped to about $100,000. And we continue to hold at about this level, which is about $75,000 or $80,000 a year. Our general state aid revenue, as you can see, has gone up and down. The dip here in these years is because of the state not making payments and getting behind. They have caught back up, but we are seeing a decline, because we do have declining enrollment. Then this line is all the other state revenue that we receive. You see a spike here in 2010 that is reflective of the ERA funds that the district received, which are really one-time dispersments, so if you took that out, you would see a trend line here. Again, that's going down. So every one of these revenue sources has decreased over the last several years, and this has really become our new normal. This is the exact same data, just formatted differently, because people process and react to data differently. So again, this is just combining them all in the same bar graph by years. And then finally, if we take our expenses and take, again, take out our debt service, because that's kind of its own separate animal, and I've also taken out our capital projects, because that can skew... And I've also taken out our capital projects because that can skew an analysis like this. And those are, we have a lot of discretion over those. But in one year, if we add a track like we did several years ago, it spikes way up and the next year, it may spike way down. So, if we, if we just want to focus in on our normal costs from year to year. You see, in 2009, we spent $37.8 million. And in 2013, we spent $37.1. We're actually spending $600,000 less per year than we did back in '09. Again, there are several factors to that. We have a declining enrollment, but we've also made reductions in various areas. So, to try and summarize all of this, the only real inflationary offset we've seen the last several years on the revenue side of the ledger is the inflationary adjustment contained within the cost cap. As I showed, the interest earnings have decreased, the general state aid has decreased, and our other state revenue funds have decreased. Now, what I didn't show was federal revenue. Federal revenue is a very small part of our budget and it's mostly special education. And that, a lot of times, will follow students. So, that, that can skew this a little bit, too. Not accessing the inflationary component of the formula impacts all future year's revenue because what we get next year is based on what we got this year. And what we get the following year will be based on what we get next year. And there's no, no relief right now in the formula for that. As stated earlier, the recommended levy is slightly higher than what is anticipated to ensure that we capture all available dollars from new construction and also allow us a little latitude in where we place funds. So, also in your packet is a sheet that looks somewhat like this. And you'll see that the number we're recommending for the levy, $35,156,000, is actually a 2.69% increase. But if we're right with the assumptions that we've used, well, we know the CPI is right, so it's really just that new construction figure, that number would get reduced down to about 1.91. Again, doesn't matter if this increase were 2.69% or a 26% increase. If it's over what the formula produces, it's going to knock it back down. The info down here is really just for informational purposes. This is our bonded debt. And again, that, we don't even levy that. That's levied by the county and that's based on the bonds that were issued in 2006 for the referendum. So, the formula, which has an inflationary component built into it, allows for this upcoming year a 1.5% increase. And that's our recommendation on the levy. We take it slightly higher for the reasons I've stated. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Alan, thanks for walking, walking us through that. How, I mean, 2.69 seems like a reasonable percentage, but why not three or three and a half just to build in a little more wiggle room in case? I guess I'm asking, how do you determine 2.69 or?
The last several years, I've usually gone about half a percent above. That's usually close enough. Yeah, if the county is off on new construction, it came in at 20 million. Actually, I think my threshold on this, it would have to go over 32 million for that to be an issue. So, the likelihood of that is very unusual. But there are districts, and we didn't talk about it tonight because it hasn't been relevant for the last several years. The way property taxes work, if you ask for an amount more than 5%, you trigger a whole new set of laws called truth in taxation. So, there are districts that will make that number 4.99 regardless because that, it hasn't triggered truth in taxation, but yet gives them that assurance. But again, that, kind of that stress test that I'll do on that says that new construction would have to come in about 32 million. That's almost back to the days when I started in the district. We were getting 35, 40, 45 million a year. But then that, that dropped significantly in '08.
Well, and I think, Alan, it's important to note that, that it's the lesser, correct, of 5% or whatever the property tax extension limitation is, correct?
That is a component in the formula. So, what that says, and it only has happened once. I believe the first year in 1991, inflation for tax cap purposes was actually, I think, 5.1%. So, the increases were then capped at 5. At no time since 1991 has that amount exceeded 5%.
Which kind of tells you that PTAL has outlived its usefulness, but that's not up to us.
Well, you know, it actually starts working in reverse. Now, where districts are getting hurt, and we're not one of them, is we have a lot of, of room. I need to back up. What happens in Springfield is after, every year, people are adding laws, trying to make things better. But what happens is they tend to add those laws on top of existing laws. So, you get all these different regulations in play. So, we have statutory limits on our individual funds that, that we can do. What's happening to some districts, though, is as their EAVs have declined, the tax cap makes your rate go up to compensate because the tax cap's saying, I don't care what the rate is. It's really about the increase over the prior year. But you still have these old laws that say, well, wait, your rate can't go up too far. So, there are districts bumping up against that and we're not. That does remind me of one thing, though. I would like to back up for a second because maybe, as some good news, this number is the projected growth in EAV. So, we're, again, this is based on info from the county. We're projecting growth in the existing tax base of 2.57%. The last several years, that's been a negative number. It's been like a negative five, negative six percent each year. So, hopefully, this isn't a one-year anomaly. Hopefully, we've, we've kind of bottomed out. We're going to start seeing some maybe normalized inflationary trends in the value of property.
It's because of the quality of the schools around here. And any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Albus.
Welcome.
Next are the committee reports. Do we have any of this month? Or liaison reports, sorry.
The last NSSED meeting was prior to the last board meeting, so I discussed it there. But in the interest of a public service announcement, the next meeting will be tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM. Look forward to seeing you all there. And it's in Highland Park at the NSSED campus.
Okay, any other liaison reports? Okay, next action items. Mike?
I recommend the approval of the tentative levy, which Mr. Albus has gone over for us unless there are any questions for him at this time.
May I have a motion to approve the tentative levy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the tentative levy as presented.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have the delineating agreement.
This one, I really recommend that the Board approve.
May I have a motion to approve the delineating agreement?
I move for approval of a new multi-year performance-based delineating agreement between the Board of Education of Lake Forest Community High School District Number 115, the Board of Education of Lake Forest Elementary School District 67, and Michael Simic, consistent with Section 10-23.8 of the Illinois School Code in that the initial goals and objectives have been met by the superintendent.
And before we get into that, you should have asked for comment.
May I have a second? Any comments?
Yeah, I do have some comments. And, you know, I brought it up with Mr. Block. I am concerned with the term of the contract. And let me first start off by saying, being Veterans Day, thank you for your service in the Air Force, Mr. Simic. And I think you are the right guy to be here at the right time. So, let me also say, I'm all in favor of you continuing in your role. My concern is not with you, it's with the contract itself and a couple of provisions. I, I do believe five years is, you know, while it is the maximum allowed by the state, it is longer than we've entered into in the past. And just as a data point, since we like to talk about those, right after the last, after the strike, senior member of the leadership team was quoted as saying that we would never give the teachers a five-year contract because there's just too many variables as you move out into the future. I did call several other districts, well, I picture quite a few. And while 65 does, just gave their superintendent a five-year contract, I think their strategic plan is more in place while we have just gone into mission visions and goals. And so, we do have the vision. I don't think, you know, we, we went back and forth. We really have not set the goals. And, you know, so that is still a work in process. Again, things do change over time. And, you know, in the event that, you know, something were to change in the future, where the Board, you know, while I don't anticipate it, but if there were some reason where we decided to go our separate ways, one big issue with that is a large amount of money on the table, which, you know, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars that we would still be obligated to pay. As an analogy, after last Sunday evening, I think the Bears may have gone in a different direction if they weren't committed to such a large amount of money to Mr. Cutler and to, you know, Tressman, the coach. You know, they had some significant issues there. I don't expect us to have a train wreck like they did. But, so, again, I, I think, and what I found with mostly other boards that I contacted was they generally have a rolling three-year contract that, you know, you would never let the contract expire, such as in our case, where the current contract is good through next summer. And, you know, we're amending it, yeah, at this point, you know, two years and six months into the contract roughly, with a five-year additional contract. The other issue that I raised that I, I still don't understand was the, in the event of a termination, was the 105% of the then-current pay. Very few contracts basically give you a pay raise and then fire you. And so, personally, if, you know, we were doing that, I think it should be 100%. Having said all of that, I do think you are the right man for the job. So, my issue is not with you, it's with the contract. And I, I think that was mentioned also last week or two weeks ago by some concerns on the 67 Board.
Mr. Mormon rightly points out that it's not typical for school districts in our area to have a five-year contract for their superintendent. I think that's, the fact that we were even considering that is an indication of the unique situation that we're in right now, where we're on the verge in, in District 115 of making some really, some changes of great importance for our community and for our students. We feel that we have the right team in place. And by offering Mr. Simic a five-year contract, we are, we have great hope of, of sort of cementing that team, of which he is the linchpin, and being able to carry all those plans to fruition. He's a unique person, in my opinion. He's a unique superintendent. Our district is a unique district. And I think that after many months of careful consideration and a lot of discussions, we've come to an agreement between the three parties involved, Mr. Simic, District 67, and District 115, that's really going to be for the benefit of the whole community. So, it's never an easy process. And, but I think that we, we're really going in the right direction with this. And fortunately, you know, running the school district is not, is not a game. And we have a lot of data behind us that doesn't have to do with the strength of our opponent's offense. Fortunately, we don't have an opponent in that sense. So, I feel very comfortable with this contract. I have referred jokingly on the Board quite a lot lately to the fact that I'm, I'm a lame duck and I, you know, I have senioritis. I'll be off the Board as of, as of April. But I feel really good about the prospect of leaving the Board in several months with, with this five-year contract in place and with the great team that Mr. Simic has assembled. So, I do, it's always a process of, of collaboration and of consensus. And consensus means that no one party gets everything they wanted. Everybody gets what they can live with. And I do think that we ended up in a good place in that regard.
At the, at the risk of sounding uncooperative or ungracious here, this is a point of, of point of order, point of fact on the, on the superintendent's contracts that, that may bear mentioning just so it doesn't hang out there as, as being one thing when, when it, it is not, our, the, the data that I, that has been gathered by the district, Glenbrook, Niles, Deerfield, Highland Park, New Treers, Stevenson, Grant, and many others. So, essentially, all of our comparison high schools have five-year contracts for the superintendent with the exception of Libertyville, which has a four-year, two-month contract with theirs. And on another, another point, on the, the, the terms of the agreement are, are unusual in, in terms of 105% in that most of the contracts have no provision for a buyout. When, so if the contract is terminated in year two, the following three years must be bought out. In this case, it is, it is, no matter where it is, it's one year. And that's, that's where the 105% comes in.
You know, I'd like to throw a few comments in because I think as, as Dave alluded to in the beginning in a letter from, from Dick Block, the single most important thing we do, for the most part, as a Board, is to hire and fire the superintendent. And I think because of our predecessors, I think they did a wonderful job in identifying and vetting and finding, you know, in this case, the best man for the job. I've made several comments from time to time, and I'll make them here publicly about the fact that I like, I trust, and I respect Superintendent Simic. Now, it doesn't mean that from time to time, we're not going to have discussions and we're not going to agree on, on all the points. And in fact, you know, it's no secret to, to anybody in our community or anybody here, there's a huge difference between kind of the business aspect that some of us are anchored in and the educational aspect that others are anchored in. And Nikki's done a wonderful job over, you know, the last year and a half that I've been here to constantly kind of anchor us to that, that reality. You know, that being said, I, it's incredibly important to, to point out that, that Mike's dealing with a moving target here, right? Our Board has evolved, and the most important thing we can do as a Board is act in unison. That unison continues to change. We have, we have two great new Board members that, that have been seated with us over the last couple of months, Reese being the most recent. We're going to see that change again this April as, as Nikki and Dick term off after their, their two terms of service. And we have the same thing with District 67. So, if you're, if you're Mike, you're constantly trying to judge people and personalities and, and knowledge and understanding and effectiveness or ineffectiveness, quirky aspects of our person- personalities, all those things come into play, and it's, and it's very difficult to try to get your arms around that. That really leads me to this five-year term. So I, for one, wasn't very excited about a five-year term. But Mike stepped up and essentially said, look, we all have goals. We did mission vision goals, we've hired a, a water walker group of talent, Mike has, as he's brought in a team to help us kind of steer and guide the school. That requires some security, in my opinion. If, if, if I'm some of the folks on your staff, Mike, I'd certainly like to know that the board is committed to what you believe in and what you're doing and what we're all trying to do together, and I think that's important. But the, the piece that Mike acquiesced on is kind of the out clause. And it's this, look, we're, we're both in a great position, I think, now, but we're, we're both very realistic in terms of what changes may come down the road, and in the event, you know, we decide that Mike is no longer our guy, our out clause is one year of the, the previous year's salary at a hundred and five percent, not, not kind of our Jay Cutler thing, we're all debating from time to time whether or not that was a good deal or a bad deal. So that long-term guaranteed deal does not exist here. And I think it's important for the public to know, as we're committed to the philosophy and the belief and the energy and the skill that that we're all putting forth, in the event that it isn't working, there isn't a huge liability on behalf of, of the district or our, our families within Knollwood, Lake Bluff, and Lake Forest from a community standpoint. Last comment. We, we talk about a performance-based superintending contract. It's incredibly important that I share publicly, as I have privately. I don't get it, and I don't see that this is performance-based. The language that we have in the agreement, I'm very comfortable with. I'm particularly comfortable with the fact that we agree to work in good faith to better define and establish what that looks like. But, but right now, when we talk about performance-based, the business side of me typically says, well, there's risk. Well, it's important that we note, there is no risk in this agreement because we're not ever going to take money away from Mike. I think it's more of an opportunity cost type situation. And so I, for one, have a lot of energy that I'm willing to invest, Mike, on your behalf, to work through what some of those details are, because we all know that that's where the rubber meets the road and where we have, we have the real challenges in terms of defining and, you know, what are the appropriate objectives and how we're going to measure those and who are we going to hold accountable. There's a great body of work in here, for those of you that want to take the time to read it. It's, it's, it's not nearly as meaty as I, as a business guy, would like to see it. But, but having had the pleasure to work with Mike for the last year and a half, I, I have all the confidence in the world that we'll get to something that's fair and reasonable that would allow me and perhaps some other future members of the board to sit here in public forum and, and clearly articulate and state that, you know what, we believe in what we're doing, we're holding Mike accountable in the things that we've talked about, and and all those commitments that we've invested in, including the talent and the people, we're going to deploy those appropriately to make sure that it's for the benefit of, of our kids, and we're continuing to drive education in, in the appropriate way within our community. So with that being said, Mike, know that you, you certainly have my vote and my support. Still going to hassle you from time to time, but I don't know any other way to, to not do that, but look forward to working with you in the years to come.
If I may, as a newer board member, I would like to take help and try and sit on the board and watch this process unfold over the number of months that I've been here. I thought we found creative solutions to adapt to change and collectively, actively ask the very questions. And I'm not going to talk about those right now. I mean, that's a very thoughtful thought.
As the newest board member and long-suffering and loving Bears and Cub fans, I hope, I don't believe we're near the futility of the, of the Bears, and I don't believe we'll ever be near the futility of the Cubs. I'll echo what John said. I think our primary responsibility is to hire and fire the superintendent, and I think we've got the right guy. I think we've got a great guy. I think it's a board's role to tie that guy up for as long as we can. I think five years is the right term, especially to give him time to keep, to find and keep the right team in place and to better educate our kids. As a business guy, John, that works with a bunch of people that measure non-financial things, I think it's possible to get to where we need to on, on the performance metrics. It's not as easy because the metrics aren't strictly business-financial, but it is doable. And I was glad to see that Mike was, was open to that and willing to accept that. So he has my vote, and I look forward to working with you. Hopefully, I have to run again. Ann and I have to run again in April, so you could have four new board members up here.
I think my, my only real concern is that Mike ought to have his head examined for signing on to five years of having fourteen bosses.
Any other comments?
I'll, I'll throw, I'll throw one in there as, as well. Being a lifelong Lions fan, I know the definition of futility right in there with the Cubs fans, but more seriously, I'm very much looking forward to the work ahead and would like to thank each of you who really committed a lot of time and a lot of interest to the, to the process, and I think in a very collaborative and thoughtful way. One of the most important things that a board does, and, and we did this this past year, was establish a mission and vision milestone project. And more important than establishing that is establishing something that, that resonates with people. And we've got, we have that unusually in place at this point, and I think that's really, really a good thing. The relationships that I've developed with the staff and the community and the kids sets us to do, I think, unusually challenging and interesting work in the near future and hopefully well into that future. I like to talk of hiring the superintendent a lot more than I'd like to talk of firing the superintendent, so we'll stick with that for a little while. But for the administrative team and for the community and our staff, stability and leadership is really important. And one of the things I talk to different board members about is when, when you throw your weight behind the district leader, what you're really doing is you're speaking to the staff and the community as much as you are to the, to the district leader himself. Educational research also very, very strongly supports the notion of stability. And executive leadership is a prime component of highly effective school organizations. In fact, if you want to find a highly successful school organization, invariably you will find that they have had long tenures of, of really strong people in executive leadership positions. And so I certainly hope to be and expect to be that kind of person. That's what I've always driven to do throughout my entire career. And I think it's just, just like I like to tie up our really good administrators, I think it's just smart money for boards to say, look, we've got a team that we want to keep in place, and the person at the top is, is a key aspect of doing that. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not going to repeat, but I, I agree with most everything that's been, that's been said here. You've got my vote, and, and it reflects my vote in the entire team that you've brought together. And I would invite, as Dick Block recommended, people who are interested, take a look at the contract and, and look for the, the details. If you've got questions, we'd like to hear about it. So with that, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Nay.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
Okay, next is the human resources. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
I move that Lake Forest Community High School District one fifteen Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Sor, Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District one fifteen Board of Education approve the consent agenda items include... Approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, October twenty-fourteen; minutes of irregular meeting, October fourteen, twenty-fourteen; minutes of an executive session, October fourteen, twenty-fourteen; disposal of audio recordings, April ninth, twenty-thirteen.
Thank you for finishing after including. And may I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Snobland?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Schreiber?
Aye.
There is a, one FOIA request this month from the Illinois Education Association. And in terms of announcements, Wednesday, November twelfth, we have a late start day, nine thirty A.M. November twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, we've got Thanksgiving break. Wednesday, December third, late start day, nine thirty. Tuesday, December ninth, Board of Education meeting, seven P.M. And I, I'm going to back up here because I think we missed the human resources. No? We're good? We're good? All right. Phew. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.